And we're live.
Welcome this morning.
Three, two, one. Committee on Civil Service, Tuesday, the sixth of October, 2020. Councilmember Wingo.
Resident.
Councilmember Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Resident.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Commerce resident.
All right, welcome this morning, everyone, to a very hopefully brief committee on civil service. We will start from the top, please.
Item number one, appoint associate auditor.
Motion to approve items one and two.
Motion to approve, seconded by councilmember Rashid N. C. Wyatt.
Take from the table item three.
Taken from the table, item number three, seconded by councilmember Bowman.
Item number three, request to speak regarding Buffalo Fire Department.
Items open.
All right, this item is open. Who do we have?
Karen, we've been joined by Mr. Ventreska, representing Fire Union. Mr. Otto should be back after that, and I think he just needs a moment to connect on audio.
Okay.
Benny, when you're all set, anytime you have the floor to speak.
Yep, there he is. Hey, Benny.
There you go. I'm here with John Otto as well.
Hey, John.
Morning.
Morning.
Is it our time to go?
It's your time, your time to shine, your time to shine.
So, obviously, thank you for letting us come on this morning and speak with you. We had a few items that we wanted to discuss with the council. And the first one, obviously, being the Commissioner's residency. At the end of the day, we're very concerned with it. And we share with you as much documentation as we have. We still aren't sure that he even lives in the city anymore. And at the end of the day, I think the city's been made aware of it, and he hasn't been removed. So I think we're past that point sadly. And at this point, what our concern is, is that we have members who are required contractually since 2013 to live in the city. And we want to know if they're going to be required to do so, and what the requirements are, and what we can, you know, I mean, we feel like there's been a lot of statements made by the mayor and some council members that, you know, you can own property in the city and outside the city. He said, he, the mayor said that he spends the majority of his time in the city. I mean, I have 700 members who spend 91 days a year in the city. So what constitutes residency? And, you know, again, I mean, if we want to go back to it, the bottom line is the Commissioner is required to be a city resident from the day he is put in, is appointed, and then he was given a six-month waiver by your body. And as recently as November of 2019, 18 months after his appointment date, he voted in Tonawanda. He lives in Tonawanda, and now that quote-unquote he was caught, he may or may not have sold his house and may have moved into the city. We don't know. So I guess that's where we're at.
All right, well, ju- just to respond to that, Benny and John, I did speak with the administration regarding the residency of the Commissioner of the Buffalo Fire Department. And they assured me that he does live in the city of Buffalo, and that he did put his house up for sale that is in another city or town. And the requirement to live in the city has been met based off of the administration's testimony to me. So with that, I don't know where else to go with that other than someone sitting outside of his house, just making sure he leaves and goes there. But again, I say that, you know, in jest, but, you know, it is not illegal to own multiple houses in, in, in different areas. I mean, I wish, like some of my colleagues, I owned a house somewhere else, so I had somewhere else to go. But I do understand your frustration and the ambiguity around this situation. I would, you know, agree with you that it needs to be much more clear what constitutes residency, how many days out of the week they need to live in the city, or how many days or nights they need to sleep in the city, whatever the case is. I was talking with my, one of my legislative assistants regarding this just last night as we were watching the Patriots get beat. Somebody heard that. But, um, we were talking about it last night, and we were discussing how the, the residency issue is somewhat of a contentious issue because we, 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 we would like everyone who's on the police department and the fire department to be residents of the city of Buffalo. But you know as well as I do, the contract for the Buffalo Police has expired, and we no longer can keep them, those folks who are hired to maintain residency in the city of Buffalo. But as far as the police department is concerned, we are absolutely definitely, and the fire department are concerned, on the same side. We do want our members to live in the city of Buffalo, and i- if, if we do find that there are double standards related to folks living in the city and not living in the city, folks who have to, you know, be required to comply with that rule, then we'll, we'll, we'll dig further deeper, deeper into it. But it's not just about the Commissioner, it's about all of the workers living in the city of Buffalo, who work for the city of Buffalo, who, who make their earnings here in the city of Buffalo. So I do hear your frustration and concern about that. I did do my own personal inquiry, and that is information that I received. He does live in the city of Buffalo, his house is up for sale in the other town, and that he will continue to live in the city of Buffalo. And he's committed to ensuring that he resides in the city of Buffalo. Now, I know you have two other concerns regarding safety.
As far as that's concerned, number one, the fact remains that he moved into the city when he was caught. So I just want to, I guess, again, if you're able to have dual residency or maintain some type of residency outside the city, and the fact remains is also, will my members be given the same leniency? So if they don't live in the city, and we come to find that out, so then they have, what, where are we now? We're over two years, that, that maybe after two years, and they get caught, then maybe they can, you know, then they'll move back in, and maybe then they'll follow the residency rule. If residency, residency was an important issue, and in 2013, this union agreed overwhelmingly to lifetime residency for all of our members going forward since 2013. Obviously, negotiations in 2017 and 18, it was an item for us that we wanted to pull back on. And we were told that under no certain terms that the city had lifetime residency, and it wasn't a topic for discussion. So we're under that rule, our members follow that rule, and now here we are with the Commissioner. And again, he may live in the city now, but it's a question of two years after the fact. And so I just hope that there's an understanding that if my members don't live in the city, if my members have dual residency, if my members are, you know, and again, that's why we're kind of looking for some type of terminology or decision-making where, okay, they're 91 days a year, 150 days a year, how often do they have to put their head down in the city to be a resident? So.
Well, I, I, and I see you, Councilmember Wyatt, but let me just say this. What, what, what I don't think I'm willing to do is to engage in the conversation about the contract that's already been established. And what I'm not willing to do also is kind of throw off these hypotheticals that we know would be ethically unethical, I should just say it that way. So, and I get your point, Benny, I really do. I get your point, and I hear exactly what you're saying. They work for the city, they should live in the city. However, this is a decision that the, the, the administration had to make in a situation that they dealt with after our inquiry. Now, if he did not live in the city for 18 months, wow, I didn't know that, but I know he does, he li- he lives in the city right now. And as far as the other members who are firefighters, we need to continue to encourage them to, to be compliant. We can't do wrong just because someone else does wrong. And what you say all the time, two wrongs don't make it right. So what we want to do is make sure that everyone is in compliance moving forward from this day. I'm going to ask Councilmember Wyatt to make his comments, and then I'll give you back to you. All right, Benny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand, Benny, where you're coming from. I'm not willing to agree that we're going to be lenient on anyone if they're not following the rules. But we should know, and it should be explained to us, the facts of the situation. Does he or doesn't, if he did or he didn't, there should be some type of fine or something that addresses this corporation council? What is the, the fine for someone who, or what is the remedy for someone who lives, was supposed to live in the city, but didn't? And maybe have moved back in? Is there anything that we have on, on, on the books right now for someone in that situation?
That I know, and I do believe that it might be an administrative policy or decision. So it might, we may have to look to see what there is, if any, that the fire department has on that dictates how they treat their, their members if it's found that they're not in compliance with the rules or regulations that they provide.
I mean, because whatever that is, it should be re, be instituted, because I agree. If the Commissioner doesn't live in the city, and he's just moved in the city, and then we have a firefighter who had that same situation, then what are we to do with them? That, that's not fair. And so I don't know the details. I know I did see information that showed that he lives somewhere. I don't know factually. I know the, the chair isn't speaking to the administration. But this shouldn't be ironed out, because I don't think that there should be any preference for anyone who doesn't follow the rules. And so if we say that the Commissioner did live, what wasn't living in the city, then all of a sudden he moves in, then there should be some type of consequence, because if not, we're setting the precedent, saying the next person that does it, okay, we're going to give them that same respect or same consequence. And right now, it doesn't seem like there's any consequence. But I guess right now, I don't know the facts. I know what was presented to me, but I haven't gotten any type of cooperation that that is factually what happened. But there should be something that, if that is true, that should be done, because I would not want another person, if it was a firefighter, to come before us. They used to live in Tonawanda, they moved in the city, they fulfill their requirement, and then we do nothing, because we didn't do anything to the Commissioner. So we, whatever that consequence is, if corporate council could provide us whatever documentation that shows what it is, I would hope that the administration would put that consequence in place, because I'm not willing to set a precedent or willing to give someone else that benefit that, okay, well, the Commissioner didn't live in the, in the city, they came back in, you didn't do anything to them, so you shouldn't do anything to me. I don't, I don't want to begin that process, because if it's a rule and it's a contract that you should live in the city, then you should live in the city. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you. I see Mr. Scanlon had a, had a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question for Corporation Council, and I don't know if she, she has the answer to this, or if this is something we need from Commissioner Herndon Hill. But Corporation Council, what are the parameters that we use as a city to determine primary residence? I know people can own property in multiple municipalities, and that's one thing, but what are the actual parameters we use to dictate or determine primary residence?
Um, what I can say for you is, I know that New York State has a standard for residency, right? Under New York State laws, for tax purposes, a resident of any city or any state would be considered someone who have lived there for more than 183 days. So more than six months of the year. I would think, and I don't know for a fact, I think this is something we would have to look into the administration aspect of the, the fire department to see whether or not they have a different standard. But I would think that it would go with something similar to that or even more, because you can always provide more, just not less. Thank you.
Okay, well, look, the, the Commissioner isn't here to kind of answer, Mrs. Can I see you? The Commissioner isn't here to answer the allegations. And I know that Councilmember Wyatt had asked some questions, but I, I do believe that Benny and John are the experts on their rules and their contract, so that they negotiate it. So why don't we allow them to answer some of these questions? And, Mrs. Scanlon, you can go, and then we'll have Benny come back with the answers to Mr. Wyatt's questions.
I, I was just going to ask if, with your permission, Mr. Chair, if we could have staff also reach out to Commissioner Herndon Hill and get the exact language that they might use, or what, what the parameters are they use for primary residence.
Chief of Staff has confirmed that he would, he would make sure that that happens. Thank you. And, Mr. Wyatt, your, your question from earlier.
I was just asking what the consequence was, and Corporation Council did say that, but I guess we need to hear from our Human Resource Department as well. Because again, I, I don't want to set a precedent, and then we have a firefighter come before that may have been a sinus, a similar situation, and what are we to do then? You know, if the Commissioner did the same thing, and we didn't do anything to him, then a firefighter comes, we didn't, you know, I, I don't know where we would be in that situation. So we definitely need, you know, we have Corporation Council giving us opine, but we also need the Human Resource Department to speak to the issue as well. Thank you.
Okay, so real quick, Benny, what does your current contract say about the residency, and if there are any consequences for folks who don't live in the city of Buffalo? What, what does the contract currently say? Is there any type of ramification or punitive measures?
Uh, no, two things. So specifically, our 2013 MOA states, the following will be added to collective bargaining agreement. All employees, all employees hired on or after 1-1-2012 must maintain active domicile residency in the city of Buffalo throughout their employment with the department.
So what is active domicile? What does that mean?
That, I guess that's, we, we like clarification on that, but as well, you have to understand, the Commissioner doesn't fall under the contract, because he's not a 282 member. He falls under the charter. And what the charter states clearly is, the residency requirement, all appointed officers and employees of the city of Buffalo, and then except those expressly exempt under New York State law, shall be residents of the city at time of appointment or hire, and maintain such residency during employment. And in that case, I know the council yourself, you gave him a six-month waiver to move into the city. And then the definition of residency in the charter states that residency shall mean a person's usual and customary place of abode, where the individual lives and regularly stays, the place where the family of a person permanently resides, and the place where any person having no general, no family generally lodges. So I guess the other thing is too, is that, again, and whatever the repercussions are that Councilmember Wyatt spoke of, in November of 2019, we have the voting records, he voted in Tonawanda. I mean, that's 18 months after his appointment, and over a year after he was given a six-month waiver. I mean, I think we've established he doesn't live in the city. He didn't live in the city. He just now got caught, so now he's selling his house. So whatever the repercussions are, that's between you and the administration, and we really don't have much say in that, and you know our position. And then on the other side, our contract, again, I didn't negotiate the 2013 agreement, and it's not my favorite contract, or the way it's written. So it says that we have to do it, but it has no, it has no parameters for discipline, or what happens when a member violates that as well. So the question would become, do we have to negotiate some type of punishment policy for our members?
Or they, or they afforded the same.
Or they afforded the same leniency. Oh, we caught you, you hadn't lived in the city in five years.
Well, of course, we've already said, I don't mean to interrupt, but we're not, we're not, yeah, we're not doing the leniency. We, we require everyone, according to the contract, to live in the city of Buffalo. We're not looking for anyone to try to skate that or anything else. I, I, you, everyone knows my, my position on both fire and police. If you work for the city, whether we have dilapidated housing or, or crime or whatever, you work for the city, you should live in the city. This is that simple. I mean, we're good enough to take a paycheck from, we're good enough to cash that check. We should also be, also be good enough for you to find somewhere to live in the city of Buffalo. That's just my personal opinion. I know I have a lot of colleagues feel the same way. But at the same time, I really would like for the Commissioner to answer some of these things in a, in a, in a space where these questions may be posed, and he can answer them. The, the voting issue is a very compelling point, but we still want to hear from the Commissioner as well. I, I want to make sure that we're fair, and that we give everyone the, the, the opportunity to, to answer. Mr. Wyatt?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I agree, it's compelling, but anybody can vote anywhere. You know, you can still live in the city and then go back to Tonawanda, but you shouldn't, but they can't, you do. But I guess my question to you, Benny, is, how do, what do we do as far as all your firefighters? Do you know that each one of them live in the city? I mean, it's contractually stated that they have to. But what type of process is in place to make sure that each one of them does live in the city? I know that Human Resource Department, once upon a time, had someone that verified those things and would go and do an audit. But I don't think we have that person, have that person in place for some time. But are you, can you attest to each one of your firefighters living in the city of Buffalo?
Well, I would start with, first of all, you're mentioning, you're mentioning felony voter fraud, like it's, like, just to throw it away. And then part two is, it's not, certainly not my, or the union's position that we should be checking on our members to ensure they live in the city. The bottom line is, is obviously residency was an important item. We agreed to in 2013, lifetime residency for our members, we're there. And then the idea is whether or not we want to agree to it, I think, like you talked about, the precedent's kind of been set. And the, the documentation's there that he hasn't lived in the city, and, you know, again, we, we're not going to, obviously, I don't think we're going to come to some type of resolution that, yeah, okay, they get a certain period of time, but obviously, maybe there ha- needs to be some type of negotiations of what does happen if a member gets caught. And then we want our members to follow the contract, that's never a question. I agree, we agree to this, this is what's written down. I want all my members who've been hired since that date to live in the city for the entirety of their career, without question. And again, so we want to know what that entails exactly. And then I guess the next part would be, what's the negotiated item of punishment if they violate a section of the contract? I mean, we could just handle regular discipline, and the first thing is a written warning. So.
Well, I'm certainly not agreeing with felony, felony voter fraud, absolutely not. But I'm saying that you're not voting twice. Is he voting in the city of Buffalo and Tonawanda? I don't know. I'm not getting into it. I, I'm just, he presented some information, and if that's valid, then that's the thing that we should be looking at. But I don't know if that's the be-all answer that, hey, he voted in Tonawanda, that means he lives in Tonawanda. I don't, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, the evidence that we need, is it that simply where he votes? I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not the attorney, I don't, I'm not prosecuting anybody, I'm just looking at, how do we validate the information that you provided to us aside from just where he voted?
Well, what I'm saying is, is if either he lived in Tonawanda and voted in Tonawanda, or he committed voter fraud. And, and, and again, his house went up for sale, didn't go up for sale in two, in June of 2018 when he was appointed, and went up for sale in July of 2020 when he got caught, living outside the city. So.
Well, the, so let me just interrupt, because these are some very, 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 very serious allegations that we're making about a person who is not here to defend themselves. And again, too, let's remember also, he was appointed by the administration. The council can hear cases and things of that nature. We can compel folks to come through our subpoena authority. But at the end of the day, the decision will rest with the administration. Now, again, as compelling as your argument may be on this side, there may be a compelling argument on the other side. We don't know. However, the fact remains that I believe the majority of us feel that if you work for the city, you ought to live in a city. And from what I'm being told, and what I have been told, I'm sorry, by the administration, is that the Commissioner of the police department lives in the city of Buffalo. Now, that's not to say that all police officers, fire officers, live in the city of Buffalo either, because I know that there are some fire officers who do not live in the city of Buffalo, because some mornings on my bike ride, you know, and I'm not going to put anyone on blast, but some mornings on my bike ride to Niagara Falls and back, I do see some firefighters. So I mean, you know, and I hope we're just not picking and choosing to, to pick on the Commissioner, but all of our city personnel, it's just, ask me, my opinion, I think everyone should live in the city of Buffalo. If the city of Buffalo is good enough to cash a check from, the city of Buffalo should be good enough to live in. So, I mean, uh, th- these arguments are very compelling. You know, you talked about how he was voting in, in, in another town. From what I'm told, he is registered to vote in, in the city of Buffalo. And, and I understand the frustration, understand your aggravation. But we need to have the Commissioner come in and answer a lot of these allegations. I, I think that's only fair, because what we don't want to do is, is fall victim of fake news, and everyone, you know, making allegations, and no one's here to defend it. Mr. Wyatt?
Mr. Chair, can we table this until we get someone from Human Resources to come, so that we can discuss this and understand exactly what the guidelines are? Because I don't want to, I'm not, I'm not trying to get, you know, convince, convict anyone of doing anything wrong. We're just hearing information, but I do want to know what the guidelines are and what the consequences are when someone does not follow the rules for our city.
All right, Mr. Wyatt, I think that is fair, and we will motion to table, but I know they have two other items on their request to speak on today. But before we do move on, there, again, there were a lot of things mentioned today, a lot of variables, factors that have to be answered. And I think tabling this is a good idea, so I am, if there's not anyone else, Mr. Mr. Rivera, we're going to get to their other two items, but if there's not anything else on this particular issue on their letter, then we can move forward. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I think, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
I think the reason that this is sensitive is because we, we make a big deal about people living in the city or wanting to live in the city. And we make it part of their contracts. We try to negotiate that into the contracts. And I don't want, I want to send a clear message, and I think the administration needs to clear this up as well. We're, we're referring it to Corporation Council, referring it to Human Resources. But the administration, these are exempt positions. They asked for a waiver, and the common council issued the waiver. I was under the impression that they were adhering, as always. Once we, we approve the waivers, we move on to the next items. And we want to make sure that those things are being carried out, and there should be a mechanism in place to make sure that people are living according to the charter, according to the residency law, whatever it may be. So we don't have this, because I think it takes away from our position going forward, especially with negotiations, when we're trying to negotiate this into contracts, and we're trying to work with the unions. And at the same time, we're having a conflict like this. So the administration needs to clear it up going forward. I don't know if we're going to be able to resolve this, because it has happened. Allegations have been made. We've seen news reports about the Commissioner. We've seen things on Facebook regarding the Commissioner not living in the city of Buffalo. So we need to clear this up. We need the Law Department, I agree with Councilmember Scanlon. They need to explain to us clearly what's in the charter, what the law says, what constitutes residency. But we need the administration to be firm with regards to residency requirement. You know, in terms of the Commissioners and those people that supposed to live in the city, but we have no mechanism in place. We have no way to enforce, and I don't even know if we have people to go and check on people's residency. I'm, I'm, for years, I remember we've talked about it. So we have something on the books, but there's no enforcement mechanism in place to make sure that this is being enforced across the board, whether it's teachers' assistance, those people that are required to live in the city of Buffalo by charter, by law, by contract, and they're not living in the city of Buffalo. We should have some kind of enforcement mechanism in place. We shouldn't have to depend on the Fire Union to come to us and say, hey, by the way, we did our own investigation here, and this is what we've determined. This is something that we, as the city of Buffalo, should enforce ourselves to make sure the charter and the contracts are adhered to. So we have a problem, and a breakdown in the whole system, I think, where we don't have a mechanism in place to make sure that our Commissioners, that our city employees that are required to live in the city of Buffalo are living in the city of Buffalo. And we have to look at this component and say, hey, we have to put in enforcement mechanism. So we're not talking about, you know, this, these things in council meetings, we're, we're getting into personnel files, we're getting into their voting history. As a result of that, we should have our own investigators in place to go out and make sure people are living where they say they're living. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Mr. Scanlon, did I see your hand? Okay.
One more quick thing, and I, I understand, we don't want to tie up any more time, but just to be clear, the union did not do the investigation, but when we were presented with it, it put us in a horrible situation. You have to understand that we're in a spot where we have to work with the Commissioner and get things done. I mean, we're, I'm going to go into that in our next ticket items, but the fact is, we were presented with that material, and we're pretty much compelled to bring it forward. We certainly didn't do an investigation, and obviously, stirring the pot and fighting with the Commissioner really doesn't help us in any way, shape, or form. But when I have over 500 of my members are contractually required to live in the city, he should play by the same rules. So that was the, I just want to make sure that was, we get that out there.
Okay, and again, too, allegations don't make a situation true. We need to get to the bottom, the root issue causes of whatever the, is behind all of this. If you didn't do the investigation, I mean, someone else. If you didn't do the investigation, I mean, someone else is clearly trying to uh bring it to our attention and to your attention, so. Um I think it's only been fair that we table this conversation. Uh we'll table the entire item at a later point after you get to, through these next two points, but uh moving forward, I think we need to have the commissioner here to answer specific questions regarding his residency as it relates to where he votes, how long he's been there, if he even owns two houses anymore. So let's, let's make sure that the commissioner's here to answer these allegations. Uh now, the next uh item you had on your letter uh to the clerk was um financial incompetence and health and safety. So let's talk about those two things real quick.
Well, rather uh quickly, number one, as far as financial incompetence, I mean, you have to understand that since two thousand eighteen, we signed an excellent mutually beneficial contract for, for both group, you know, for the city and for the members. Uh we were happy to get that done. And then in the last two years, what we should be doing is uh solving problems and and being fiscal responsible and saving the city money. And in those two years, we haven't been able to accomplish anything and anything and everything that we have moved forward has caused uh litigation and arbitration and uh perb charges and lawsuits. And again, that is not the goal of the union. The goal of the union is to negotiate and get things done in a reasonably timely manner and save the city money. Even in the cases of the BRIPS, uh the Buffalo Retirement and Incentive Program that we've been doing, we have worked diligently in all respects to get those done and will be doing more. And it's instantaneous savings for the city of Buffalo and a benefit to the members. And some of those members haven't been paid. We have multiple retirees who haven't been paid, paid correctly. We have members who are disabled members who haven't been paid in over a year. The police get paid in six weeks. Uh and again, I mean, as far as the overall administration of the department, I mean, I can't be the commissioner and the president of the union. Let me put it that way. I can't be the one to uh tell him how to run the department. But I can tell you that when it comes to contractual items and ways to save the city money and to do things together, we haven't had that cooperation. And because we feel the contract's violated, we have, we are compelled to take it forward and we're and again, the union doesn't wanna spend our funds, but we have attorneys and we have to file and go to arbitration and we're spending anywhere from ten, five to ten thousand dollars on every arbitration, which is costing the city time, energy and money as well. And that's just not how we should be operating and we're just not getting any cooperation and we haven't solved anything really. And then even the other, understanding that when we bring things forward in a grievance meeting and they're agreed to be paid and then the members aren't paid. When I BRIPS a member and tell them how great it's gonna be and save the city, half of their wage, immediately, we're talking about fifty uh to uh seventy thousand dollars a year, we're, we're getting the member off the books and off the city rolls. And then, you know, there's no uh follow-through. We're not getting, they're not getting paid correctly. How can I do the next person? So I guess that's our concern with the finances, that we wanna get things done and negotiate and we're not getting the cooperation. And we're not getting the things taken care of that need to be taken care of. Again, retired members and including BRIP members have not been paid correctly. And that's, we're going on for some members over thirteen months. And now we're talk, uh since July, we've had members who didn't get their proper BRIP rage, wa, raises, I'm sorry. And uh that's been another four months. So how can I tell the next person to take this incentive program and save the city fifty thousand dollars when they're not being paid correctly where you are? So.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's, 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 Vinnie, that's fine. Uh what about health and safety?
Oh, for, as far as health and safety, uh all I can say is, is that the city again has failed to meet with us uh contractually this quarter for um, and we have just so many health and safety issues. I mean, the firehouses, if the city was uh a landlord, they would be in uh court because of the condition of the firehouses that have been in this condition and, and dilapidated since the commissioner took over. Uh washers and dryers, a simple item that we should feel should be purchased by the city and ready to go in a few days. Uh we've had washers and dryers out of commission. Uh no way for the members to clean uh the firehouse and uh clean their equipment and clean uh the sheets and things in the firehouse. And we have had uh I mean, the bathroom at engine thirty-seven on Royal Island Shenango is falling off. The kitchens at uh engine two, I'm sorry, at engine, well, engine two as well, but engine thirty-two and five uh on Swan and Seneca. I mean, some of these conditions, I mean, we just had a member uh who had catastrophic knee injury and now is off duty because of the grates in the floor at engine thirty-seven. It's just, it's become, it's to the point where uh I, I just, it's the, the firehouses are dilapidated and they're just, we haven't been spending the money to, and I understand that, you know, again, the fiscal responsibility, but if you are doing the preventive maintenance and the things that need to be done over a period of time, then we don't have to build uh, you know, new firehouses and spend six million dollars. I don't know, but that's our big health and safety is that. The, and then again, we're not getting the cooperation. We say the washer and dryer at, at engine twenty-eight and Lovejoy is broken in January and here we are in October. I mean, if I wanna buy a washer and dryer, I could have one in my house, I think, in two days. I, I, I don't, you know, I know there's a lot of layers of purchasing, but it gets to the point where this is a huge health and safety item, again, a contractual item that was agreed to, to save the city half a million dollars a year in linen service. And now we, we're not getting them replaced in a timely manner. So those are.
Valid, 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 valid.
One more, one more, one more.
No, Vinnie, no, no, there is no more.
Yes, because Councilman Wyatt, I just saw his face and I know this is uh an item for him to. The fact that we have fire investigation in the Dillon Building with no potable water, they cannot shower there. They do not have washers and dryers there. That's a working fire company in my estimates. And the fact that we have them in an office building where they can't even shower on the floor, they have no privacy, they have no kitchen, they have no potable water. Yeah, they have, they're there at fires, they're getting filthy and dirty, doing investigations. And in some cases, they're going home and having to clean all their filthy equipment and gear and their home washers and dryers and at home taking showers and exposing their family to Carson engines. And again, so that, and with that, that is it.
Okay, listen, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna table this item. We're gonna ask council staff to invite uh management of the fire department uh to this committee so that they can specifically uh answer your allegations and answer some of these budgetary questions that are contractual that have not been honored, so you say. So what we wanna do is make sure that we give everyone an opportunity to answer uh the, the, the serious, serious allegations. Because again, to firefighters, first responders, they are absolutely uh, uh, I'm sorry about that. Uh firefighters are absolutely uh valuable to the community as well as our police department uh go officers. So we wanna make sure that we give uh them the benefit of. Mr. Wyatt, was that your hand?
Yes. Yeah, um thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we also have someone from finance? Because he talked about the incentive, retirement incentives that we've been approving. And you're saying that when we approve them, that folks still don't get their money until later on or they haven't received that money as of yet?
In some cases, uh some of the members who re, who retired last year were entitled to raises in July. And then there was just a long process and we have had some members who have retired. And then the idea that we've kinda set up with uh Commissioner Helfer is that they retire on that Monday so that two weeks later, they get their last paycheck. And two weeks later, they receive their first BRIP entitlement and it just hasn't been functioning as, as properly as we want. And again, we, we wanna keep this going and, and save it. It, it's an instantaneous save, savings to the city, so we're gonna continue to work on it. And we did so. I guess that's one of our problems too. In the, the midst of the COVID, we were BRIP-ing people and meeting at headquarters, but we couldn't get a meeting for anything else because of COVID. So we kept doing what we're supposed to do and kinda fell on dusters, everything else that needed to be done. So that's all we have.
So if, if we can have someone from administration and finance to come and talk, even if it's Kevin, um that would be appreciated so that we can get some answers to this.
Council member Rivera, did you have your hand up? Okay, so again, uh we're gonna table this item so that we can have uh the police, um so, sorry, my goodness. So we can have fire come in and answer these allegations uh and also answer some of the uh issues that you brought up today. Um can I have a motion, Mr. Rivera?
Motion to table?
Motion to table, seconded by council member Bowman.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by council member Bowman.